I want to get on that one.
Do you need to have to fill one out for each precinct I guess?
That's what I was going to do. All you have to do is fill it out for the county and list each truck.
So you've got everybody's trucks, you can list them?
Well, you have to list every truck?
Yeah.
Just send in the list of the trucks and...
And then that includes the box tells?
Do they give you...
You can do the box tells too. All they'll be is whatever your terrestrial car, you can haul five percent more.
Right, right.
Did they give you something to carry in your truck if you get stopped or...
I don't know if they do or not. There will be a record all the way through.
Does it give you anything? Yeah.
Yeah, if I come back and they run the boxes.
He has to do something in his truck when he does the pipe.
I bet you we got a little bit of the same thing.
Oh, you have it in the truck, you said?
They can run it too, but it's just better off for you if you have it.
That's the thing.
Yeah. I've told Brandon, I don't know if he's going to get seen. We've got money coming in pretty good.
Yeah, the next couple days will go a lot.
That's not, that's just...
Well, this is here from the water bill that they're here. What do you want?
There's a lot more than that.
I want to get the education.
So she's going to take like a few dollars and all that?
Something like that.
She'll, she'll, yeah. We just figure out how many weeks now.
Oh, go party. He messed with it, Marsha, I'm not sure.
Still better be.
Yeah.
You just nabbed it.
Did you see a cash position person in?
Yes. Oh, good, yeah.
That's a problem, huh?
It's like a product.
You're flirting.
Yeah.
So they didn't even have the new dealers make some luck over there.
Oh, yeah, we get money every night.
Just like, yeah.
I didn't work that time, I don't think.
I don't know what time it was.
Remember how you did that time today?
I guess I'll find out at that.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Young County Commissioner's court's a regular meeting Monday, January the 28th, 2019. It is nine thirty a.m. Make note that this meeting was posted in the manner for the time required. And with the exception of Commissioner Sipes, all other members of the court present. If it's convenient for you, please stand for our instructions. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you bring to us. We're grateful for this nation, for this state, for this county. We ask your blessings upon those who place themselves in harm's way, whether they be foreign or domestic, to protect those liberties, those rights, and enforce those laws that we as people have voted for, those that are created by our legislatures, both in our United States and in our state. We ask or give you thanks and our appreciation of the ability that we have to serve our constituents within this county. We ask your blessings upon this meeting and all others that we have, dealing with those things that are of concern to our citizens and to this county as a whole. We ask that you guard us, direct us, and that we look to you for our counsel and inspiration. Forgive us for our many shortcomings, as I know we did well, in Christ's name, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all. Honored and blessed to slay, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you. Item number three, public comments, announcements, presentations. These are no acts and items, and we have limitations, we do, on public input. There are time limitations, that is. First, I have referenced the 12th Annual Young County Masonic Lodge Scholarship Auction. Be on Saturday, March the 9th, 2019. Auditor mentioned this morning that we need to have those items recognized ASAP so we can put those in the advertising, they must be advertised. The item we will put in auction. Anybody that has something or some item that might need to be salvaged at auction, please see the auditor's office as soon as you can. The other item I have here is Brazos G's Regional Water Planting Group. Is seeking nominations for a county member, our county representation. A little unclear whether that man must be a county official or employee or just a magistrate for the county. They need to fill two places of representation from county, from county level, not necessarily Young County, but from county level representation. Is there anything else that might need to be mentioned? Do you have anything else? Any member out there? How's our J P? How's the office up and running? Good?
Doing good.
Are you collecting lots of money?
Banking lots of money.
Item number four is consider county clerk's minutes from previous meetings, January 14th and January 17th. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to those?
Still moving.
Wiley, say, Rogers. Commissioner Wiley moves, Commissioner Rogers seconds, for approval of the January 14th and January 17th meetings respectively. All in favor? Character four oh.
Is someone previously done?
No, this is the minutes. You just approved them.
We were, we were getting time ready.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, well, all right then. All righty, there you go. All right, you don't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
I noticed Sharon Van Bally came in just a second ago with Representative Springer's office. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the court, Sharon?
I'm just happy to be here. I've been trying for a few years to get here.
Okay, well, we just, we just got through the public comments announcement. We can move back to there if you have anything you'd like to tell us or declare to us.
They're just working on stuff at Austin. I don't know really any specifics. I wasn't prepared for that. No, I just came to observe and to participate if necessary. I'm just here and apologize for being late.
Very good. Letting know to represent us well. Item number five, consider treasury financial reports, updates on security pledges.
I have November and December's. I thought I already did November's, but I was guessing I had to change it and get money to that and I forgot about reporting it. So we're all balanced, everything's good. We've started getting all our tax money in. And from December, we had eight hundred and eighty-four thousand in treasures. Now we have two million five sixty-six.
That's our business.
Yeah, and they've already reported, I think, to about the twentieth. So we'll still get a lot this month. And I think there's a huge pledge in there.
Yeah, two billion, twenty-six, five sixty-one oh seven.
Yeah, I see in there where we had substitute, substitution of them.
They'll start, she'll be watching the money to make sure they have enough. So they probably released the ones that bought something else. But this is the, that's future. They're pushed currently before they release that.
Okay, we're, so we've, so we've had our US Bank thing.
Oh, yeah, but that's not due till February, we only have plenty of money to cover that. We got about eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. Was seven hundred thousand, is that what it was?
Yes, I thought, yeah, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, something like that.
So the rest of the month, we'll continue to get that.
Still moving, we're just playing.
Okay, including the discussion on resolution substitution.
Was that true?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second to Commissioner Pruitt, to approve Treasury Financial Report and Updates on Security Pledges, concluding the resolution for substitution or withdrawal of securities, pledges held in trust by Texas Bank and Texas Independent Bank. And make note that we received an additional forty-five hundred dollars plus on him, hot tax.
Yeah, and I was in touch with Trina at Sierra Bank. She's at a different branch now, but she's watching. I told her to keep an eye on our money to make sure the security pledges cover our excess.
Okay, very good. Y'all in favor?
Yeah.
Four oh.
What's that bring total of hot tax to fifty-four?
I brought that with me. I think though, so where is it?
Item number six is consider auditor's budget amendment voucher payable.
Don't have any budget amendments. Always have vouchers. Sorry.
I pay the bills.
Just gotta pay the bills.
It is what it is.
Today's vouchers are a hundred and fifty-one thousand, one thirty and nineteen cents. And out of the general is seventy-four thousand, nine sixty-eight, eighty-nine.
Still moving with vouchers.
Motion of Mr. Wiley, second to Commissioner Rogers, to approve vouchers payable as presented, no amendments. Y'all in favor?
Also, when it bears the nine hundred and fifty-five for the Texas Association of Counties, if you look on the road bridge, it's being paid out of the vouchers today also.
Still moving. Membership dues, Texas Association.
Thank you.
No, it actually is budgeted in the road bridge general level too. So it's, yeah, the nine hundred and fifty-five just come right out.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second to Commissioner Pruitt, to approve Texas Association County's annual membership dues in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. I don't think that's changed in a good while.
No, it's been that forever, not the same, I still go to all this.
Y'all in favor? Four zero. That is a budget.
It is, yeah, every year we put that in there. Also, Marcia's going to talk to us about a printer for the county clerk.
We are going to replace the printer on the case counter. It's not a heavy duty printer near enough for the bibles with that thing that they've got to do it. And it basically quit almost last week. So we've got to get a little bigger workhorse. She does have the money they had budgeted for it in the county clerk records management that was on that.
There's over two hundred thousand in there.
Yeah, two hundred and seven thousand.
The printer's seven hundred.
They're waiting for it.
The printer's seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Ooh, I don't know that.
A little heavier duty printer than the smaller Lex marks that we can use to be able to do that.
That's the clerk's record management?
Uh-huh, it'll be. I call it, I'm like the Bible printer or something in order to keep up. That's what it'll be used for.
Still moving.
And it's just a black printer, nothing fancy, it's just a heavy.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second to Commissioner Rogers, to allow expenditure of seven, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars?
Nine.
Ninety-eight?
Seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Oh.
Even?
I'll get it right sometime. Seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars for a new duty printer for the county clerk's office to be paid from clerk's records management fund?
Yes, clerk records, county clerk.
County clerk records management?
Yes.
All in favor? Four oh. Item number seven, we're going to pass for next month's meeting. Commissioner Sipes couldn't be here to make that presentation. So we will bypass that with the plea of court. Item number eight, discuss, consider burn restrictions.
I think we're good chatting about that now.
No action.
No action.
Item number nine, the request for removal, for approval for the removal shrubbery of structure and security cameras because of maintenance issues. That's my request. There, we've put up some new security cameras. Shrubbery between courthouse and memorial, obstructing that view somewhat and other memorials. And we have an issue right here behind us where both of those are causing some maintenance problems and extra work that not necessarily be necessary for our maintenance people. And it's also causing contributing to the environment, the vertical, the permanent, whether they be skunks, possums, raccoons, feral cats, rats, snakes, scorpions, and so forth. It's a big matter, my request to the court allows to remove those particular items and most of the lives and secrets taken down if we get them found. They're also affecting some of the air from our windows and what have you. That's my request.
You gonna get the maintenance people to do it? You get the maintenance people to do it, or who are you gonna?
Well, I, there might, we might be able to do that with the maintenance personnel mostly. We might need a little assistance from one of you fellows with a skid loader or something. There's some right back here that's just south of my office there where the transformer is. I think there's some live wires I think that we ran into before down there. So. There's not attached to anything, they're just down there. So that would be something that we'll have to be careful with when we do that.
We found the live wires and put them in a box. Fix it for extension.
Yeah, that's, but we ran into those before when we did maintenance repair down there. There were little parts around.
Okay, so Chris?
Yes.
Y'all not pose.
So don't pose.
Smile, you're posing.
The other thing we need to do is, I noticed that the standpipe didn't leak. Like when they took those parts during the standpipe when they done repairs on here. She sits there just constantly, so it's gonna be boring. I tried tightening it up with two wrenches and it still don't sit. So that's what we'll get a hold of during the day. We'll see if he had the parts and where he gets the parts. He said we'll be like spoke to him.
Another thing that we've done, a little bit of pruning on trees. We had a limb broken, one of the con trees. It was about to collapse on one of our county vehicles, looked like. So maintenance folks took care of that. They planted that. We have another one out here that looks, appears to need life. It's no longer living. I guess we'll see if it comes out this spring, but it's also something we had. We talked about we're going to have some individual that we're going to donate funds and that might still happen to trim and prune these trees. We did it with a professional artist. So it took a little different avenue, that might happen here. But it's, you have to go through a little different way, a little different avenue.
What do you all think about getting rid of that pine tree in front of courthouse right there?
Uh, where the one that's got...
Yes, and then putting a flagpole there and getting the flag off of the palm.
Off of the palm?
Well, we can maintain them a lot more simpler and better.
Well, might be a consideration, I guess. It's a little bit difficult to climb up there and adjust them when they're, when they're supposed to be adjusted. But you can see them for a long ways up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's real.
But we have that's kind of...
Other than putting up an automatic electronic radio alarm system, which I think that would be unnecessary. I, I don't have any problem relocating.
I just think you look good and you walk in front of courthouse with a flag to be right there. Need you to make something.
Put some lights on it?
We have just lights on it. And according to our report that our harvest give to us here at courthouse, he mentioned that what we did with the nice flower ink that is bottom of it, it would be called a rurock anyway.
Yeah, it could now cover that.
So we could keep the flower ink with there, but still have the flagpole put in the middle of it there. I think that would look better. It wouldn't put the needles all over the ground too on the mess. Yeah. But they have to keep it, the pathways going into the courthouse, the courthouse.
Yeah, we said the fine.
There was one there at the beginning that died and then they played.
Your office laking still, Mike? Is your office still laking, or is it pretty good now?
Actually, it hasn't rained enough since up there.
I always want it rained.
Oh, it rains, okay.
It's much raining, we've had it help.
Might we have some, most of the infill pricing issue cured lately for the time being?
There, come on, which way you go? You need to, you need to load over there.
Can I, isn't the maintenance guy doing that? Do you think we should hire it out, maybe?
Well, I might look at that a little bit and see.
Get a professional job.
Not that they're not special, but to me that doesn't...
With, I guess, the court's, the court's permission without any motion or anything like that, I'll, I'll look into that and bring back. I'll have pricing for that before the, let's see what. And I'll take that just by general consensus. Okay, well, before we do anything, I'll, I'll check around some of the, something pretty good. Maybe you're asking to do something like that.
So there's actually no action on that?
Is there any?
There's actually no action.
There's no real action on that, no. Okay, what else?
Can I talk about the Masonic Lodge again?
Yes.
Marcia does have some old printers and computers that really aren't a lot of, I guess, hard drives been taken out. We will be putting those in the Masonic Lodge, so I will be advertising. If you have something big you want, if anything big, I need to itemize it. But if it's just little stuff like this, I'll just say, you know, various computer equipment. So there will be an ad going in as news. Yeah, so I probably need to get that in like the first second we can go with them.
I'm saying to Marcia tonight, so we'll kind of know about that, about the middle part of February?
Yeah.
Like you'd like.
Don't I have to just advertise one time for an auction like that? So I need to advertise the other middle of February, so.
Middle of like February, maybe the third week.
I don't know.
Do you have anything else before you go on?
Will you be presenting a, a deal for those printers, copy, an exhibit for those, the printers for the?
No, I mean, they're just, just various.
Okay, okay.
Right.
But you will be presenting a voucher, copy of the voucher?
Oh, yes, for the one today? I'll give you a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
And the voucher sheet also.
Yes, yes.
Well, Shirley, Shirley. She.
I just need a copy of that.
You got any time, Cheryl?
Good.
That's true. We just call it.
Nine nine months.
A little penny.
Oh, okay.
No, this is what we need, all the work, all the.
All in favor?
Shirley, you just need to stamp your front pages and any copies of, this is one of these ones?
No, yours are here, those are hers, and we just need her to stamp those and then we can need them back, so we can, she can have a copy and I can have a, or she can keep the original.
Yeah, this is hers. She give a lot of her own make copies. Yeah, I was nearly, yeah, thank you, Miss Pass, now. Yeah, yeah, just the front pages, Shirley's only need copies of, I'm holding.
This is one of the best meetings.
Oh, there she's got, oh, she's got, she's.
Yeah.
This is a twenty-minute meeting, right? Who's ever had one of those?
I didn't even hear the adjourn. Marcia, you gonna make copy of that for Shirley?
I already did.
Okay, good.